I call to order the July ninth, twenty twenty five Planning Commission meeting at nine AM. We are meeting at the Manzanita Hall as well via Zoom. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please proceed with your call.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Gupta.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Chair Saranakuan.
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum and staff is represented by Fox, Monowitz, and Gonzalez. Thank you.
We will now open public comment for items on the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. I will first call upon members in in the room, followed by speakers on Zoom. For in-person comments, the speaker slips are located in the back of the room. On Zoom, please use the raised hand feature or star nine if you are calling by phone. And at this time, we have no public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now close public comment for items not on the agenda and consent agenda. Do we have a motion to set the agenda and approve the consent agenda, which includes June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five minutes? And PLN twenty twenty five dash zero 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 three four?
I so move that we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. That was a motion by Commissioner Hanson and a second by Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Chair Saranakuan?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Item two. Resolution honoring Commissioner Ramirez for his service on the San Mateo County Planning Commission. Mr. Monowitz, please proceed.
Yes, good morning. Thank you, Commissioners, and good morning, Commissioner, former Commissioner Ramirez and staff. It's a pleasure to acknowledge Commissioner Ramirez for his service to the county. Twelve years, I think. And Manuel offered some very unique and important insights to this commission. As a builder and contractor, I think Commissioner Ramirez provided pragmatic input on some of the, you know, difficult issues associated with development that led to fair resolution of complicated matters. As a resident of North Fair Oaks, Commissioner Ramirez ensured that the interests of that community were always considered and addressed in our deliberations. And as a San Mateo County community member, Commissioner Ramirez demonstrated a real sincere desire to protect and enhance both the natural environment and our built environment. And his service to the commission will be missed and is very much appreciated. So thank you, Commissioner Ramirez. Back to you, Chair Kwan.
Thank you, Steve. Commissioners, please join me in thanking Commissioner Ramirez for his service. Commissioner Hanson, perhaps?
I enjoyed your time. You and I didn't always have the same views of things, but your views is highly respected. And when we disagreed, I thoroughly listened, and sometimes you did change my vote. It was... I always thought you were open. I always thought you took the heart of the community first. There was nothing ever personal behind us. You were outstanding as a commissioner. You were almost... You became a friend to me on the commission where I could actually talk to you about things that were unique. And I want to thank you for that. And I really enjoyed my time. And congratulations for your work, not only here but in the community. It showed up everywhere. Again, just thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson. Commissioner Gupta?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Ramirez, working with you on the Planning Commission has been both an honor and a joy. I have truly valued your perspective, your steady presence, and the care you brought to every decision. I joined the Planning Commission in two thousand seventeen, and I distinctly remember the very first site visit that we had in September of that year to the Anio Nuevo State Park in Pascadero. There was this hundred fifteen acre cultural preserve, and we were asked to approve a vegetation management plan. I see some heads shaking, and I think they can relate to this event. And we were asked to approve this vegetation management plan, which required removal of an estimate of about ten thousand Douglas fir trees. And there was such an opposition from the public as well as from several agencies. And we had quite a crowd there when we reached there. But I was so impressed how Chair Ramirez at the time, how in his leadership, took in his leadership, he took care of the situation and convinced convinced not only the crowd, but some of the wavering commissioners. And we approved the project. Thank you, Commissioner Ramirez. Another thing I have always respected about you is that you always stayed very well connected with your community. You made sure a Spanish translator was always available when a project from your district was in front of the commission, so they could fully participate. Thank you, Commissioner Ramirez, for looking out for your community. Your thoughtful insights and dedication to the community has made a lasting impact. In closing, over my eight years on the Planning Commission, together we have attended close to two hundred meetings, which seems like a lifetime. So Commissioner Ramirez, I'll miss you, both for your contributions and your friendship. I wish you all the best in your next chapter. Our county and community is better for your service. Thank you.
Commissioner Gupta? Commissioner Garcia?
I didn't have the pleasure of serving with you on this commission. But everything that I've heard from all the other folks involved made a very, very lovely picture of a dedicated public servant. As the most recent addition to this commission, I hope to keep the ideals that you espoused alive.
Former Commissioner Ramirez, I just want to thank you for everything that you've done for the commission, for your community, and also for myself welcoming me here as a newbie about a year or so ago. As you know, I really appreciate your time and learning about your community and also your tips that you've given me while I've been on the commission. So I really appreciate that. And I'm sure we'll continue to stay connected and be friends and might see you in the audience here and there in front of the commission, who knows? So I just want to thank you for all your service and keep up the great work. And don't be a stranger, and we're going to miss you very much. Thank you very much. Please, please, please. Okay, well, thank you for all your kind words. First of all, I want to say that I am honored to have to receive this. I am honored to receive this recognition. Second, I want to thank Supervisor Sluckum for giving me the opportunity to serve as District Four Commissioner and for all his dedication to bring about changes to North Fair Oaks. I also want to thank the staff members. All of you guys? Let me see. For your hard work and dedication, planners, county council, particularly Mr. Fox, for all your legal advice and keeping us out of trouble. Mr. Monowitz, thank you for taking the time for the many meetings that we had as I prepare for meetings. I really appreciate that. I wanted to thank all the planning commissioners, current and past, that served with me. It was an honor to serve with all of you, and I really mean that. I think that we made a good team. I think that we served the county well. I think that we serve efficiently and with honor. I wish you all the best going forward. Third, I would like to congratulate Mr. Andrew Garcia for serving as the new District Four Planning Commissioner. I wish him a successful and long tenure. Congratulations. Finally, I want to thank my family for allowing me to serve for this long and particularly my wife, Lorraine, as we had to do. She had to do more of the heavy lifting with our daughters when I was busy in meetings or reading the staff reports. I don't think that this is a goodbye, as we still have a lot of work to do in the county, in particular, North Fair Oaks. I think that we have achieved a lot, but there's much yet to be done. I plan to stay active, stay involved. I think that you will hear from me in one way or another. Again, thank you and goodbye for now. Thank you. Any public comments?
Thank you, Chair. We do have one person wishing to speak in chambers, and that is Camille Leom.
Commissioner Ramirez, over these many years as a planning commissioner, we planners have observed how you have come to permit decisions in a thoughtful, diligent, compassionate way. In this way, you have honored the planning profession, individual communities, project proponents, and the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And with that, we have no further comment, but I myself would just like to say that I echo the sentiments, and thank you for your service, Commissioner Ramirez. And we have no more public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We will now, no more public comments. For item number three, Madam Clerk, please proceed.
We can entertain a motion.
We... Thank you. We will now close public comment for item three and entertain a motion.
So I move that we that we have the resolution to honor our former Commissioner Ramirez.
I will second that.
Thank you. That was a motion by Commissioner Gupta and a second by Commissioner Hanson. Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Chair Saranakuan?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Are we okay to see if we can take a photo? Group photo?
Sure, yeah. You could stand probably right by the flag over here. I'll opt.
Yeah, please.
Hold the resolution.
So where do we stand? Next to the flag, maybe?
Yes.
We will now move on to item number three. Madam Clerk, please introduce the project and the planner.
Thank you, Chair. This is for item number four. Owner, San Mateo County. Applicant, Sam Hersberg from Parks Department. File number PLN twenty twenty five zero 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 two, location two hundred Nevada Avenue, Moss Beach. APN zero three seven one one three zero eight zero. And your project planner is Sonal Agarwal.
Good morning, planning commissioners, members of the public, and staff. My name is Sonal Agarwal, and I am the project planner of PLN twenty twenty five zero 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 two, which is a coastal development permit at Fitzgerald Marine Reserve in Moss Beach. The project involves... So San Mateo County Parks is seeking a coastal development permit to make site improvement at the Fitzgerald Marine Reserve site and make the site into an ADA compliant picnic space. The project includes a few scope of work, which involves installing a new one thirty feet long wooden railing fence along California Avenue, installing a new base rock pathway from California Avenue to Ranger Station, installing two new sitting walls approximately seventeen to nineteen inches around an existing whale skeleton, and installing three new memorial benches, installing three new wooden picnic tables, installing a new snail statue, installing three new interpretive aluminum panels along the whale skeleton, relocating the existing concrete ADA table on a new concrete pad, replacing the existing water fountain with a new water fountain and foot wash, and installing new native landscaping along California Avenue and North Lake Street, including twelve landscape rocks. The project involves approximately one fifty cubic yard of grading and is appealable to the California Coastal Commission. Here is the project site or location. It is located at the intersection of California Avenue and Nevada Avenue. It's an existing county park, and the purpose of this project is to make it into a gateway park to the existing county trails. The project site is approximately point seven nine acres, and it is zoned as R one S seventeen DRCD. This slide shows what is there existing and what is being proposed. As you can see, there is a new base rock pathway that is going from the existing pathway at the north, and it will connect to the existing parking lot at the south. There are no improvement being proposed to the existing parking lot. It will stay as it is. There are three new wooden benches along the existing pathway along California Avenue. Three new picnic tables, as seen at the upper right corner. There is a concrete pad next to the existing concrete pad where the ADA table will be moved. And as you can see on the screen, there are two white lines which shows the location of the sitting walls around skeleton, existing skeleton. And there will be three interceptive panel installed along the skeleton. And other landscaping details and landscape stones are also shown. This slide shows the existing condition of the site as of now. The whale statue is shown on the upper left corner. The existing pathway along California Avenue is in the middle picture. And some basic landscaping along the existing pathway is shown on the right corner of the slide, right upper corner. And as you can see, there are bathrooms and Ranger Station and other things which are seen at the bottom pictures of the slide. The project complies with general plan. It complies with various LCP policies, specifically policy one point four, one point five, one point three five, seven point one, seven eleven, to name a few. It complies with zoning regulations, and it complies with design review standards. Then, San Mateo County Parks Department, acting as lead agency, filed a notice of exemption on January two, two thousand and twenty five for the proposed activities at the Fitzgerald Marine Reserve. The Parks Department determined that all project activities proposed under the CTP are categorically exempt from review under the CEQA pursuant to guideline one five three zero three E plus three relating to construction and location of limited number of new small facilities and structures. I recommend that the Planning Commission approve the coastal development permit, county file number PLN twenty twenty five zero 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 two, by adopting the required findings and conditions of approval contained in attachment A and determine that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environment Quality Act pursuant to guideline one five three zero three E. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, staff. Do we have any questions to staff from the commission?
Yeah, I had a couple of comments and some questions. The report is... I really like the reports, especially it's a good idea to include these site visit pictures. It gives us a good idea of what the site looks like. So I appreciate that. The question that I have is that this whale exhibit, I looked at the picture, is this out in the open?
Yes. It's out in the open. It has a railing, existing railing surrounding it right now. And as part of the project, I believe the existing railing will be also replaced.
And but it's not covered?
No, it's not covered.
So over the years, like, I'm just curious that what happens to it? Like, would the skeleton start withering away? Yes?
Possibly, yes. Yeah, I believe it was recently installed, probably like two years back or something like that. So over time, we'll see how it will...
Yeah, no, I remember that project had come through our Planning Commission about putting that whale exhibit out there. So you... It has to be regularly maintained? Some maintenance is required?
I'll ask, yes, if the applicant can also come and clarify.
Maybe later on. The other question is that during the construction of all those items, is the area going to be open to the public?
I would defer that question to the applicant as well.
And do you have any idea of the project's schedule?
I believe they are planning to start sometime soon, but I think the project applicant might be able to talk about the schedule better.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the question from Commissioner? Thank you, Commissioner, for your questions. The applicant will now have fifteen minutes for the presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff. Sam Hersberg, I'm the senior planner with San Mateo County Parks. I used to work in the county planning department back in the nineties. I did the Fitzgerald Marine Reserve master plan twenty five years ago, and we've been implementing it over time. We've changed the parking lot to be to handle stormwater better before it enters into the creek. We've removed some of the cypress trees, which used to be there, if you remember the site, because they got limbed up, and at some point they reached the end of their life and become kind of a hazard. We've changed the Ranger Station, a former Ranger Station, to become an interpretive center. And this is the main entrance to the park, and this is where people come and have picnics before they go down to the reserve. And it's also an area where docents can give presentations about such things, such as the whales that come from... They give birth in Baja, and they come up the California coast, and this one happened to pass away at Fitzgerald Marine Reserve. It's an opportunity for education, so we have some interpretive panels included. We have some seating for the docents to be able to share. And we're formalizing the picnic area. And as going through the planning process, we changed some of the paths from impervious to pervious surfaces, so everything's impervious. And we think it'll be an enhancement. There probably will be some landscaping that takes place at some point in the future, but the whole point is this is the main entrance to the reserve and the opportunity to educate visitors who are coming to the reserve by our docents who are led by the Friends of Fitzgerald Marine Reserve. And I don't believe we treat the whale skeleton at all. It's there for interpretation, as is. Be glad to answer any other questions you have.
Just more for curiosity. You said when docents talk about the whale exhibit, do they go through the anatomy of the...
Sure. You know, when I first started at the county, I was working on studying offshore oil drilling, which was proposed. And one of the biggest sites that was proposed was at the Fitzgerald Marine Reserve. And we lobbied to have the Monterey Sanctuary expanded to include the San Mateo Coast to prevent offshore oil drilling. We also worked to push oil tankers further offshore so that they would not be causing whale slicks, but also hits of whales as the boats come by. We have a lot of migration of whales going all the way up to Alaska. And so this is an opportunity, as the whale population continues to grow, to interpret it for schoolchildren who come out there, but also adults who don't know... And over time, we've introduced orphaned seals. We now have a population of four or five hundred seals out there that were orphaned, that are now a colony. Nature is coming back. This is also a marine protected area, so we ban fishing in the area. It was originally set up as a reserve to be able to protect the takeout of the reserve, all the resources. So the whole thinking about how you manage an area for resources has changed over time. And this is certainly an opportunity to interpret as the whale population increases.
So the question I was... I had was is this going to be open during construction time?
Yeah, I mean, we'll probably be limiting some construction during grading, but it will happen pretty quickly.
So what, what is your like scheduled duration?
We, we always wait for the appeal, appeal period to end. And when we receive that letter of decision, park staff start mobilizing the, the equipment to be able to do the work in-house. And this work will be done by, by beginning of fall at the latest. It'll happen pretty quickly. They're ready to go, it's always, the permit process always takes longer than the project construction itself.
And in, in terms of like, it, this funding, is funding in place?
Yes, yeah, we have.
So that is not a deterrent?
Not a problem.
Or any delays because of that?
And we've had extensive discussions about the improvements with the Midcoast Community Council and the public and the Friends of Fitzgeralds, there's been a lot of outreach that happened before we made permit application to make sure people were comfortable with the improvements to the way we were doing things. So we've had a lot of consultation with them and every, there's consensus.
No, it looks, looks like a good, good plan and I'm glad that it's being done. I've been there, my grandkids, they usually go down to the tide pools. But they're down, they enjoy that.
So we have a, a regulation about groups that are larger than 10 should have a docent-led tour for the purposes of people understanding the sensitivity of the tide pools that they're coming to. Again, it used to be a place where people used to just grab things and stick them in their pocket and, or the bucket brigade. We, we don't do that anymore. And so educating people about, hey, you can look at it, but put it back, you know, right where you found it. And, and, and how to visit the reserve in a respectful way that preserves it for future generations.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Sam? I do have a question. It's not specifically about this project, but what's next planned for that area?
There's not another pending project currently anticipated, but that I know of.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean the Rangers won't tell me of one when I get back to my office. But this is, this is the priority project for them right now. Making sure that the, this is a welcoming place and is formalized for education and the picnic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner for your question, we will now open public comment for item number four. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you Chair, at this time we have no public comment for item number four.
This park has been in front of me more times than all of the other parks put together in my 15 years here. This has been a very active, it's been very transformative. And it keeps moving to a better spot. And, you know, I, I was one of those kids who went out there in a classroom, you know. My mid 70s and, you know, this thing has changed very much. And it just keeps improving and I would just want to thank the Park Department very much for taking an enjoyable place to exceptional. So I'm, I'm going to be voting yes on this.
Any other comments or questions?
If not, can I make a motion then? I so moved that the Planning Commission approved the coastal development permit, county file number PLN 2025-2 by adopting the acquired findings and conditions of approval obtained in attachment A. And determined that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to the SEQA guidelines, section 150, 15303E.
I second. Thank you, that was a motion by Commissioner Hanson and a second by Commissioner Gupta, Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Chair Saron Kwan?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you. We'll continue to move on to the agenda of the correspondence that matters?
Yes, thank you Chair Saron Kwan. I have no correspondence to report to you today. As far as our next meeting goes, that will occur on July 23rd. It will be here again in Manzanita Hall. We will not be having a study session. We do have one regular item, it's a coastal development permit, design review permit and variance for a new single-family residence in El Granada. This is in a location that is adjacent to the Montecito riparian corridor. So it involves issues related to wetland and riparian setbacks. And thus involves variance for the front setback. Moving on to the Director's Report, I wanted to update you on some of the follow-up work that has come about following the conclusion of our farmworker housing task force efforts. You might recall following the tragic shooting in Half Moon Bay, the department was engaged with a task force in evaluating housing conditions for farmworkers on the coast side. As a result of that effort, you know, we identified a number of follow-up actions that we are now taking. One of them is to attempt to reduce permitting requirements for the establishment of farmworker housing on the coast side. So to that end, the department is proposing an amendment to our local coastal program that will seek to establish an exemption for farmworker housing projects that fit within certain parameters where we can be assured that those projects will not have an adverse impact on coastal resources. And therefore can be, the permit review can be streamlined and make it more feasible for farm owners and operators to build housing for their workers on the coast side. The other important finding that we made and it's actually been in the news recently is concerns about the quality of the water supply for some of these housing units. Most of the development on the coast side in the rural areas rely on private wells. And currently, the regulations on private wells are limited to when they serve a certain number of units. And then they are monitored on an annual basis. The Department of Environmental Health is proposing to amend our ordinance regarding private wells that will require a higher frequency of monitoring of wells when they're used to serve employee housing. So that's another important step that the county is working on. Our plan is to present these initiatives to the Agricultural Advisory Committee and the Pescadero Municipal Advisory Committee in August. And then following the feedback we get from the public on it, they, at least the proposed LCP amendment will be before the Planning Commission in late summer, early fall. The changes to the environmental health regulations do not come before the Planning Commission, but they will go directly to the Board of Supervisors. And I'll keep you posted on how these initiatives develop. And that concludes my report for today, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Has there been any indication that there's a need to change the, the schedule for inspections for, for water systems?
Yes, so when we did the farmworker housing task force, part of the protocol was for every inspection, the Environmental Health Division took a test of the water supply. And in many instances, we found that the levels of bacteria or other constituents exceeded normal health standards. So yes, this initiative is based on the findings that we found during the task force investigation.
The, the fact that it's on, it's all on private well, this is principally due to the remote location and the inaccessibility for, for any sort of municipal system?
Yes, that's correct. You know, pursuant to the Coastal Act, our infrastructure, our municipal infrastructure is limited to serving the urban areas. And there's a strong regulations against expanding municipal services to the rural, rural areas in the interest of avoiding sprawl into sensitive agricultural and natural areas. There is a municipal water system that does serve the town of Pescadero. It's got a limited supply and it's being evaluated for, you know, the possibility of expansion. But at this point, you know, just maintaining service to the existing service area is the focus of CSA 11.
Are the, the private wells also responsible for any sort of fire response?
Yes, when we have development on private property in rural areas, it needs to be accompanied by adequate water storage to ensure fire safety. So as you'll see in projects that come before you, oftentimes they're accompanied by water storage tanks necessary for fire protection.
Thank you Steve, any further questions or comments?
Yeah, I had this recent bill that was signed by the Governor about the SEQA reform. Does that impact, like in what way does it impact us or increase our work?
Sure, so the Planning Commission typically makes a determination regarding a project's compliance with SEQA when it takes action on a discretionary permit. The changes to SEQA that were recently signed into law will exempt more projects from the need to conduct environmental review, in particular housing projects that are primarily infill projects. And so I think the implication for the Planning Commission is that some of these projects that used to trigger environmental review will no longer need to have a determination of compliance with SEQA. And it also means that, you know, SEQA has provided important information to this Planning Commission in making its decisions on projects. So without having a SEQA document accompany some of these projects, we might not have as robust information to help guide the decision regarding the project. I think from the Planning and Building Department's perspective, we will strive to provide the Commission with all the information that you need to reach a conclusion, whether or not it's subject to SEQA. But yeah, I think the bottom line is that some projects that in the past have been accompanied by, in most cases a negative declaration, we don't often get to the EIR level, but sometimes we do. Those projects will no longer be subject to those forms of environmental review.
Doesn't require any updating of any other regulations for, for the county?
No, the department does maintain guidelines of how we implement SEQA. And, you know, we will need to update our internal guidance to ensure that we're compliant with the amendments to the law. But other than that, there will be no changes.
Because my understanding is that it's already enforced, like this went into effect June 30th?
That's correct, and you know, I think we've seen in the recent past a number of changes to state law to try and facilitate housing, in particular affordable housing. The Commission might recall for the Cypress Point project, we actually produced a draft environmental impact report for that project. But because of changes to the law that occurred in between the time we produced the draft EIR and the final action on the project, that we, the Commission didn't have to certify the EIR because during the processing of that, both the permit and the environmental review, the law changed to exempt it from SEQA. So we've been seeing these types of changes in the past and I think it's likely to continue due to the state's interest in trying to encourage additional housing development.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.